Good morning, everyone, and thank you for joining the EDC Coffee Chat, Coffee with Colleen. We are honored to have our District Three County Commissioner Mike French join us today to talk about the recompete application from the North Olympic Peninsula Recompute Coalition, which he will describe that for us. We've got several people on the call today, actually, that were part of the grant writing team and the task force as well. And so we are going to go ahead and go through it. But first, just a couple of housekeeping items. If you'll keep yourself on mute, so we don't inadvertently hear any background noise. And if you would like to ask any questions, please, please either raise your hand or you can put your question in the chat. It also looks like Ted Stern event is joining us right now. And of course, we have Dan Underwood, PhD economist, who's going to be talking about some of the research he pulled together, working with Employment Security Department. So with that, I am going to pass it off to you, Commissioner French, and thank you so much for joining us. Take it away.
Well, thanks for being here. Are you going to share the slides here in a sec?
Yeah.
So this was a huge undertaking and a first up front. I want to say I'm really appreciative to everyone that was a part of this, that everyone sent, everyone that sent us letters of support, everyone that put in some work. And especially to Ted Stern, who was our consultant, who helped us kind of, you know, herd the cats and keep everyone marching in the same direction. And so first, we want to talk about when we get our slides here. It is how did this come to fruition? And a lot of what's, what started this was Derek Kilmer's kind of ideas, growing up on the Olympic Peninsula, working in economic development in Northwest Washington and seeing how certain communities were really struggling with persistent economic distress. And that led him to kind of create what he called the Recompute Act, which was then inserted, I believe into the CHIPS Act as a pilot project and was passed through Congress and funded. I can't remember what the total amount of funding was, but they said they expected, I think, to have. Can you remind me, Colleen, how many different grants that they were expecting to give? Something like 20 nationwide?
So in the CHIPS and Science Act, it was authorized for up to a billion dollars. But then in the bipartisan infrastructure law that was passed, there were $200 million worth of funding that was appropriated, which is what matters. That's here you go, spend this money. And so in the end, they expect probably four, maybe more grants to be awarded nationwide.
Okay. And the grants range from $20 million to $50 million, depending on eligibility. And they had this very large complicated eligibility map that determined whether you were a labor market or a, I can't remember the other phrases, but our, our application is targeted right around $50 million. We can go to the next slide.
Let's see. There we go.
And so this is the background. People can read that. But the, the goal is that we see the, the really key marker that they focused in on was that 25 to 54 age group, where we see a lot of communities nationwide that just don't really match the national averages on workforce participation rates for those prime age working folks. And so, you know, that's really what Recompute tried to target was, we call them PEGs, prime age employment gap folks. And there's a lot of ways that, that EDA was open to hearing strategies on how you get those people back into the labor force, either through job creation or through education and workforce development or through social supports or whatever else. They were really open to a lot of different strategies. And of course, they really wanted to have, they really wanted to make sure that they, that you were targeting both everyone in that gap, but also you were mindful of those equity concerns. And that, that last part about, you know, tribes, especially in our region and the rural areas, those were things that we felt that we had a really good case to make as to how we could include, you know, those members of our community and really get some investment in those communities that would be meaningful. And I think the other thing to mention about the background is this is a pilot project. And so ideally, EDA, I think, wants to find investments that can be kind of archetypes. There's different, you know, areas in our nation, I think, that our struggle will really speak to the struggle of losing natural resource jobs, losing a forestry industry, and seeing that, you know, the after effects of that, I think, is very analogous to a lot of Midwest communities that had the same story around manufacturing, for instance. So we can go to the next slide. So we, we created a task force and this was kind of, you know, we'll, we'll get to this in the next slide, but there was a real time constraint on this where we had a very short period of time to pull together an application. The due date was October 5th. And so we created a multi-county task force where we, we had a conversation with the, with the Jefferson County Commissioners and the Clallam County Commissioners. We talked about what we were kind of going to, wanted to look like. This is the task force that we pulled together. We had really good representation from a lot of different places. I think the one thing to note here is we didn't get, we didn't really include our cities. And that's something that I think we viewed as, you know, not necessarily a mistake, but just a cost of the timing of how everything was pulled together. We had a very short timeline. And if we cast our net too wide, you know, then other people were going to put their hand in the air and say, why I'm not on the task force. And so eventually, we kind of came down to this as this was the most nimble. We felt like we could make the task force, but we recognized that as this moves forward, we want to be more inclusive of places like, you know, the PUD, the cities, all different, different other stakeholders in our region. And like I said, as this slide shows, this was a multi-county project that we felt are the best application would be a Clallam and Jefferson combined application, rather than having Clallum put in an application and having Jefferson County put in an application. We felt like that would be, you know, that wouldn't show really that collaboration that I think would give us better scoring. And so again, that timeline, you know, created kind of that fire drill where we had that end date and we kind of had to work backwards to figure out how are we going to make this happen? And so what we determined very early on was we're not going to go through a formal RFP process to find investments or projects because we really just didn't have time. And if you look, when was our first task force meeting? It wasn't until August. So at that point, we only had two months, less than two months to get across the finish line. Did you want to add anything on this one, Colleen?
Uh, no Congressman Kilmer, other than Congressman Kilmer started talking about it a year in advance, but we didn't get any of the true details of the program until June 29th. And then, you know, the county commissioners had to decide that they were going to do it with Jefferson County. And we knew, we know that, that Graves Harbor and Pacific County put in an application. Mason County put in an application. But also Congressman Kilmer has been very, very adamant that this program, he wrote and is advocating for Clallum County primarily. He grew up here and he really wants to see, make some positive impact and change. So we really felt like we had to put our best foot forward and submit it, the best application that we could. So, you know, joining with Jefferson made a lot of sense in that regard.
Yeah. And so we're officially applying as a coalition. And Clallum County put our hand in the air to say that we will be the, I don't know if it's called the lead applicant or the, the chief athlete, what, you know? So the funding will probably flow through Clallum County if it arrives, but we'll all, we're all working together as one coalition.
Yeah.
And
Do you want Dan to take over now or?
Well, this is, you know, I'll, I'll start here and I think Dan will probably start talking about the data. One thing that I want to just set the table with, we felt like data was going to be a really important part of all of this process. We felt that it was, it was not going to be a good strategy to just say, we already know who the people are. We already know what the problem is. We wanted to show EDA, and this was actually in EDA's scoring, how well you understand your economic conditions and how well your solution is targeted to those was part of the scoring. And so we felt like we wanted to be very data driven. We wanted to actually dig down and figure out, you know, who actually is this and not deal with just assumptions? Because, you know, one of our initial assumptions was, well, maybe childcare is a gap and/or a barrier. And what we found out was it was a barrier, but it's more complicated. And so by doing a lot of really upfront data work, I think that informed our strategies. But it also, I think, helped us deliver a good narrative to EDA that showed that we understood the problem. And so as we dug into this, what we found was both Clallum and Jefferson County were eligible. They both had a significant difference between the national average for that prime age employment and our, our gap. Jefferson County's gap was, I think, a little higher in percentages than Clallum County, but Clallum County has a larger population. So as you see at the bottom, it ends up with Clallum County having, as we found, about 16, 1700 people in that gap and Jefferson County having a little over 1,000. Did you want to add anything to this, Dan?
I, I will real quick, real quick, if, if we were like the rest of the United States, then the people that are aged 25 to 54, and keep in mind, all these numbers have to do with people aged 25 to 54, then we would have 6,300 people between our two counties that would not be in the workforce. That's the norm. You know, maybe it's because they're ultra wealthy and the one spouse doesn't have to work. Maybe it's because they are disabled to a point where they wouldn't be able to work. But the norm would be 6,300. In our two counties combined, we have 10,000 people that are not in the workforce. So 2,700 too many. And so those 2,700 people are the ones we're going to target. Or we, the intention is to target. So with that, Dan, go ahead.
Wanted to stop for one second. Do we have a slide in the future talking about what we targeted as a good job? Because I think that's another thing to explain as to, you know, that's another part of that, the data collection is to figure out what wages are we really targeting?
Mm hmm. I, I didn't add a slide to that, but I know Dan can speak to it or I can't. Either way.
Go ahead.
Here, I'll, I'll, I'll jump in if you like.
Please.
Mike, you've done a thorough job. Colleen, excellent introduction of our actual target number of where that 2,700 people come from. Critical here is the research that's the background for this particular funding opportunity in our application. And the research indicates that areas in the country whose prime age employment participation rate falls below the national average, poverty begins to emerge. And the longer that they remain below that national average, the longer that poverty persists. In fact, if they remain below that average for just a few years, that poverty never goes away. Hence, this effort to look for innovative solutions on a regional basis to close that gap with the objective of reducing or eliminating persistent poverty. Therefore, the NOFO itself makes it absolutely clear that's what your strategy is supposed, supposed to be targeting. Not other forms of economic development, but economic development activities that specifically help successfully transition people who are currently ages 25 to 54, who are not in the labor force towards gainful employment. And so 62% of the burden is in Clallum County. You need to find jobs for just about 1,700 people who aren't in the labor force today. And Jefferson County's share of that goal is 38%. We can move to the next slide.
Okay, I think I did it. There we go.
There's a, there are a number of ways that you can break down this population to try to get an understanding of who's not in the labor force. And then ideally to try to figure out why they're not in the labor force. And then if you can figure out why they're not in the labor force, maybe you can come up with solutions to get them back into the labor force. Again, keeping in mind the objective of reducing persistent poverty. One of the ways that I've looked at the data is to break it down by age group. And one of the reasons that it's critical to use a solid empirical foundation to your analysis is that you use an approach that's based on reality rather than your philosophy. Philosophy tends to get in the way of reality, or that's been my experience as an analyst over the years. There are, there are several age groups in this cohort that have participation rates that are significantly less than the national average. And there are two, in fact, that are about 10%. One is the age group 30 to 34 years old. And the national average is that 83% of these folks would be in the labor force. And it's both genders. And in Clallum County, it's 73%. So that gap is 10%. There are about 1,550 individuals in both of these counties that are in that age group that aren't in the labor force. So if we close that gap, that means we would need to find good jobs for 155 people. And so this kind of a cut, taking a look at the gap, we'd like to reduce relative to the number of people in that area, gives us an idea of how many folks that we're actually looking at. Analytically speaking, one of the reasons that this age group is of concern is this is the time period when people should be moving into their, their prime earnings as they establish themselves in the labor force and experience upward mobility in terms of their earnings. And we're not doing as effective a job as the rest of the country on average is doing. Okay, we can move to the next slide. Another way that I took a look at this data was to focus on women with own children. It's been a national conversation piece that there is a shortage of affordable childcare that's available. And so one of the obvious policy solutions is to focus on will, who will childcare help successfully transition to the labor force? So I discovered two things that were important in this data. The first is that, uh, doing a little bit of algebra, I was able to tease out of the data the number of women with own children under age six. One of the reasons that I did that was that women with their own children, six to 18, the labor force participation rate is either approximately equal to national average, averages, or it's even above that. However, that's not the case for women with children under six. In that case, we have a relatively large gap with only a 56 participation rate. So that suggests that providing, making accessible, affordable healthcare, childcare to this particular group of women, uh, which is not a large group, would help bring in 146 people into the labor force. Again, I want to emphasize that the data says that if you're targeting childcare, accessible childcare that's affordable, you're looking to provide it for young children, not older children. It's not that childcare isn't important to all people, but this is where we're seeing it as an explanatory variable for a lower labor force participation rate.
My bet is not many people were able to tease this kind of information out that, that put in applications. And so hopefully this kind of thing will show that we really have a good understanding of our population and what some of the drivers are. And Employment Security Department helped us. You know, we asked for certain data and they provided it to us, which historically hasn't happened frequently. So yeah, it's a big win, I'd say, to get this kind of information from them. And for Dan to work with them on it.
And then just for this slide, when we go later, when we talk about our sample investments, because this directly informs how we made those investments.
Yeah. And ideally, we should be getting some information from DSHS as well. Okay, so we're in the slide on the role of education. All right. So there's a, there's a, when you start looking at, so the first thing that tends to be a philosophical perspective is that we think that more education always leads to economic success. Of course, that philosophical perspective is not consistent with empirical data. It, it's not education per se that leads to economics success. A lot of economic success depends on what family you're actually born into. That data is relatively strong. We don't have it for Clallum County. But for those people who are not born into a successful family, education can get one there, but the type of education one gets is absolutely critical. So I began, you know, teasing, teasing some patterns out of this, out of this data. And the first thing that one would say is that, well, you know, look at that gap there between the national average for people with some college or an associate's degree. And we see the gap is relatively large nationally speaking, even though on a statewide level, I think Clallum County is a little bit higher than the statewide averages, I recall, but that's going back some time. So that's a 14% gap. So our first conclusion would be that, wow, what we need to do is provide more of some college or an associate's degree and we would close that gap. But it's a lot more complicated than that. Now let's go to the next slide.
Sorry, technical issue here. It's not scrolling.
That happens.
Let's see, down. Uh, da, 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 da. I don't know why it doesn't want to work with me. I'm going to stop sharing and reshare. Maybe that will help us out. Okay. I know. There we go.
Yes. Okay, back up, back up on.
There.
We want to, yeah. So the next, uh, next look is that I had made, you know, some, some data requests from the Employment Security Department and, and they were quite helpful. And this, these, this, these two tables of data, one's for Clallum County and the other's for Jefferson County. And I'm just going to talk about Clallum. The patterns are basically the same, though the numbers, the numbers vary. So this particular data set tells us who is joining the PEG, right? Who's dropping out of the labor force? And so that's the column, uh, unemployment insurance exhaustees. And so as you, as you glance through that, uh, when we work our way down here, the first thing is that the average age is somebody that's 47 years old. So, right? People have lost their job for whatever reason and their employment benefits are exhausted. And that's it. They just, they vanish. They become PEGs. Notice that the majority of people that are dropping out of the labor force in Clallum County, that's 58%, 58% are men, 42% are women. Notice that the share for disability is at about 4%, a little under 4%. We see the so-called racial demographic there. Um, hoops. All right. So what jumped out at me here and, oh yeah, 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 yeah. I'm scrolling through my own computer, so please forgive me. I'm having a little bit of trouble. So as I began to look through education here, I began to realize that the role of education is actually quite complex because the largest group of people that are dropping out of the labor force and becoming PEGs are people with some college or an associate's degree. So if we're looking at some college or an associate's degree as part of the solution of successfully moving people back into the labor force, we need to get real specific about exactly what that college or an associate's degree looks like. Because on average, in general, that educational background explains who's leaving the labor force. It's the number one correlation, not necessarily causation. So the economic literature does indicate that specialized, focused, targeted, short-term workforce training that meets the specific needs of employers is the most efficient pathway to move this demographic back into the labor force. And I think that, to a good extent, that is reflected in the application that we, that we submitted. So we can move to the next, next slide.
Oh. There we go.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah. That's it.
Okay.
So we also, we also got data about people that are leading the labor force, what they were doing, right? What part of the economy were they employed in? So that's the industry data that you see there. There's also that base yearly hourly wage, $26 an hour. That is the target that we're looking at because that's, that's a living wage for a family of three, for the primary breadwinner in the family where both adults work and they have a child and they're paying for childcare, assuming they can find childcare. All right. So we see that construction, manufacturing and health services, you know, they're all hovering around 13%. Those are the folks that are dropping out of the labor force, about 11% in retail. And then the other economic sectors, notice that those are very, very low attrition rates. So I'm not sure exactly how we use this data, but we can see who is losing, losing the, leaving the labor force. And of concern here is that these folks in manufacturing and construction, on average, uh, over 70% of the individuals that are employed in those industries are earning $26 an hour or more. So they're, they're leaving on average, good jobs. Okay, so we can move to the next slide. Colleen, thank you. Oops.
Almost. There we go.
There you go. So we got some good summary data again, from our, our partners in the Employment Security Department about, uh, you know, where the good jobs are. And some of these sectors are, okay. These are sectors we're actually targeting in our plan, manufacturing, construction, forest products. Because those are areas that would focus short-term training, individuals can get good paying jobs. And so notice the large percentage of folks that are earning $26 an hour or more. And $26 an hour for a full-time employee, that translates into $54,000 a year. So in manufacturing, it's about 70%, right? In construction, it's nearly 80% and it's a little over 80% in the forest products industry. And by the way, all those good paying jobs are in forestry. They're not in agriculture or fishing. That's what the data shows us. Those are seasonal and, or part-time, part-time work. And we're not targeting professional and scientific and technical services because that is, that is long-term training and those are also smaller employment sectors. So these are ways that we can use the data to get an idea of who's in the PEG, some specific actions that could be taken that should help them successfully transition into the labor force and the places we'd like to help them transition under the belief that people are more likely to seek work and retain work if they're well-paid than if they're not well-paid. And I think those are the areas you wanted me to cover. Correct, Colleen?
Yes, that's right. Um, I, I just want to go back to a point that Mike made about good jobs. We did a lot of analysis looking at what it, what a living wage is for Clallum County. And we based that on what rents cost today, gas, childcare, et cetera, et cetera. And that's how we ended up backing into 26 bucks an hour. And keep in mind, a living wage does not allow for any savings. That means a, a living wage is you have enough to pay all of your bills, but you're not saving for a rainy day fund or college or retirement or anything like that. So that next level, we refer to it as a prosperity wage that allows for an additional 15%. But this, the good job definition by the Department of Labor, which in this application we were required to target, requires that you provide a living wage plus benefits. So just wanted to give a bit of background there.
And then to answer the question in the chat from Dr. Maxwell, I don't think we had any more detail on the data of who was leaving or those workforce sectors that were losing. Although I would just say that, you know, those are fairly large sectors, so it's not surprising on some level that they float to the top just from the, it's the simple amount of employees that they employ in our region. Correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Underwood.
No, that's, that's very good, Mike.
Okay. All right. So now we're going to talk about our application?
Yes.
Okay, so a lot of work, a lot of work we're into. Okay, here we go. Did you want to talk about this, Colleen, or do you want me to?
Oh, go right ahead.
So again, we're being graded on how well we understand our specific issues and how our proposal targets those issues and actually does its job. And so, you know, what we wanted to highlight is we saw, you know, that huge loss of jobs in the last 30 years from the forest products industry at really high wages. One of the points that we made was in that industry, that used to be kind of an industry that set wages for our entire region. Because it was such a high value wage, other employers had to compete to get employees and that drove wages up. And so losing, seeing that loss, and you can see in that chart, the amount of firms and jobs and the average wage that we're seeing that was lost between 1990 and 2022 in Clallum and Jefferson County, just in forest products. And that, that last category is the wage premium, which how much is that above? Is that the average wage? Dr. Underwood?
Yeah. So that's the difference between an industry's average wage and the countywide average wage. So it's, it's a nice summary measure that we often use to see does the job in that sector, is it going to make the county richer on average or make it poorer on average?
Yes. Okay. So then we can move on.
Yeah. Just the second point is that both counties increasingly depended on part-time and seasonal employment. We moved from an industry kind of manufacturing, all year round employment We moved from an industry kind of manufacturing, all-year-round employment that paid well to, different industries that were much more seasonal. So, uh, those were the two big reasons for what Dan, Dr. Underwood refers to as the Great Decline. Okay, and there we go.
And we also saw there's, you know, especially that seasonality, this is another thing that's kind of, you know, upsetting to learn, is there's seasonality to the reliance on social services as well. But this was a table that I thought was very impactful in our, um, application, where you see the number of households that are being served by each regional office of DSHS, and you see the overall reliance on those social services. And I would say that we don't, I at least don't approach this with some sort of condescension, I think it's good that we have a safety net. I think it's, but the intent of that safety net is to catch people, stabilize them, and get them back into that productive work environment. And that's where I think we see some real challenges, if you look especially at Forks in the West End, with the reliance on the basic food assistance and the troubled assets for needy families assistance. It's a really shocking percentage. And so, uh, you know, one of the things that I think is a strength of our application is we've been having some great, great conversations with DSHS to say, how can we make the systems and programs that you work more efficient? How can we supplement them, and how can we get people back to work?
Yep, and they have, DSHS is committed to being a partner to us. And so in our proposals that we're doing, which we'll get into further, we are going to partner very strongly with DSHS because they do provide, you know, SNAP benefits and TANF, and then also that's where you go to, to get onto Medicaid.
All right, so now we get into our strategies. And I will just point out that this is a two-phase application. The first phase was due October fifth, that's what we're talking about. The second phase, um, we also applied for a strategic development grant to help us shape that second phase. We'll see if we get plan approval and that strategic development grant later this year. When that happens, the second phase, these projects can shift around, we can add projects, subtract projects, change the, the value. So this is not set in stone, but this is kind of our overall strategy that we created, that we think, um, shows good investments in three major buckets, those buckets being job creation. And one of the things that we kind of, I don't think we talked about yet was what the data shows us was, again, we had, um, how, was it, uh, twenty-six hundred people in that prime-age employment gap? And if we're twenty-seven hundred. And based on our good jobs calculation of twenty-six dollars an hour plus benefits, there were not enough good jobs in Clallam or Jefferson County to really accommodate that, that amount of workforce. If we were somehow able to get all of them, get the barriers removed, get the training done, get the workforce development done, there still aren't enough good jobs. So one of our buckets was creating good jobs and, and working with uh, different institutions that are already devoted to that economic development, that already have plans in process. The second big bucket was that workforce development piece, Peninsula College was a huge partner in that, as well as the, uh, Wooden Boat School, Wooden Boat Building School in Port Townsend, but mostly Peninsula College. And then the third bucket was the social supports and the childcare and, and those kind of, the, the, um, support bucket. So in the first bucket, we see a couple of, of sample investments here that we identified. The first is the CRTC and McCall Thermal Timber Modification, that's the, um, uh, that's the, uh, Carbon Recycling Technology Center, is that right?
The composite technology, yes, composite recycling technology.
Process where they take a relatively low-value timber from the West End, which is, um, I always get it wrong, so I don't want.
Western coastal hemlock.
There you go. And they artificially, um, uh, change it in a thermal modification processing unit and line it with carbon fiber to create an advanced cross-laminated timber. They are currently, um, working with the Defense Department to use these panels that they're gonna make to make quick, um, construction for military housing of some sort, correct? And so a new thermal unit will help them get that contract, and then they also have a goal of, of using that technology to create ADU kits, basically, which are quick housing. This is something where the state of Washington recently mandated that every city in the state, every municipality in the state above a certain population is required to permit ADUs in all of their single-family residential neighborhoods. And, um, so there's a new market, this is a new product that I think is really well-positioned. This was a fairly, I would say, you know, from our perspective, a fairly low investment with a very huge possible return. So we're excited to partner with them, and of course, this partners with the McCall Tribe, who just is building a mill to do the mill work to get that western hemlock, you know, cut and processed for this. So it was a really great partnership. Um, the next one I'll let Colleen talk about, the National Resources Innovation Center, because this is, I think, uh, at some point, at some level, this is kind of the heart of, of our entire strategy on some level, recognizing that we need to see innovations in our natural resources and, and efficiencies if we want to compete in the twenty-first century. But you want to add to that, Colleen?
Sure, thanks, Mike. Um, and I just want to go back to the CRTC and the McCall Tribe project, just for a moment. The CRTC has already won a development contract with DOD. You know, when you start with a new product, it, um, there's called Technology Readiness Level One, which is, I have this idea. Technology Readiness Level Ten is I'm producing a million of them um, at a price point that, you know, has, um, quite a bit of net operating income. So in between that are stages of, um, perfection of the process and the product. So they have, Department of Defense has funded CRTC using McCall Tribal, um, Dimensional Lumber for, uh, the development, like proving it out and proving the process and the technology. Now, what they're doing is, okay, we want to actually supply you with this, the DOD wants to purchase it, but they have to go through that process. So that is, um, a little bit more background about the Thermal Timber Modification, uh, project. The next, as Commissioner French said, is Enrec, the Natural Resources Innovation Center. And what, what we've realized when we, when, um, Dr. Underwood and I, and talking with the port and lots of other entities, there are a lot of opportunities that we could pursue, um, that would make more efficiencies and add innovation to what our, uh, what our timber companies, so including the forest, the forest owners, to transportation, to, um, you know, the actual processing of the wood, things that could be done in those categories, but then also in the residual materials. Um, and Dan's actually really done a ton of research in this space. So Dan, do you want to add anything more to that specifically about the residuals?
Well, I, I think that that would be an excellent, uh, topic to go into detail on one of your coffee shows in the future, because there are so many products, and there are demonstrated products that are economically viable today, uh, that are in motion. Uh, but to speak about it, uh, briefly, we are seeing, uh, a, a large number of jobs that will be supported by proposed economic investment by uh, private and non, uh, not-for-profit organizations on the peninsula. We're talking upwards of several hundred jobs, these are all high-paying jobs, um, that pegs can be, uh, transitioned successfully with some focused workforce, uh, training. Um, that, you know, we're talking about with changes in the transportation structure, taking residuals or decomposing in the forest and releasing carbon dioxide and methane into the atmosphere, and instead, uh, turning them into finished products that can be used to rejuvenate, uh, depleted soils that can be used to provide feed for cattle, that reduces the methane emissions from cattle, to virtually drops it down to uh, just several percentage points of what it is today, uh, that have energy byproducts that could be used for electricity that could be turned back into the grid, so that would be green electricity, carbon neutral. Uh, or that electricity can be used to produce hydrogen, which is the fuel so, source for fuel cells, uh, which could then be used to, um, uh, power, uh, long-haul trucks, uh, so this is just, I'm just, you know, pawing at the surface here of just the amazing things that are in motion right now on the peninsula, and it, it's, it's, it's exciting to me to just, to no end, as I, I've been an ecological economist for decades, and we're now actually seeing the types of miracle technologies that we envisioned long, long ago uh, coming to fruition, and they're economically viable, so I better stop, because you have limited time.
And another, another big plus of Enrec is just getting all of those different companies in the same room to talk about these issues. Because the solutions in many cases are out there, but, you know, so we, we find that has immense value. The next project is a Port of Port Angeles project that is spud barging, the might have, may have heard them talk about this in the community over the last couple of years, this is something that they've been working towards. We feel like it's a really prime investment, um, both from a job creation standpoint, you know, there's a lot of other, um, synergies that it provides, both with environmental impact, um, transportation redundancy, this is something especially on the West End that we know is a huge issue for our region. We're not on a main rail line, so we're constrained to you just using truck shipping. We're lucky to have a very efficient truck shipper with Herman Brothers that runs its company very well, but we see fuel costs going up, we see a lot of, you know, real problematic, you know, transportation projects as far as, you know, slowing the flow of commerce, and so spud barges, I think, could be really great from that resiliency standpoint, from an environmental standpoint, getting more trucks off the road as far as the, you know, the, uh, greenhouse gas emissions. But also in, we, we actually think it might be more efficient from a actual just dollars and cents perspective. And so this would be an, uh, investment to the Port of Port Angeles. Um, they did a great job on making that proposal. Uh, the next two are Jefferson County-focused, and one of the things that we heard very clearly from Jefferson County was they feel like, as a county, they are really underdeveloped from an industrial perspective. And so that's where, especially this, uh, Glen Cove, um, project comes in. And these are projects, I'll just say, they have a large price tag, they have a lot of, um, you know, those price tags are not the full cost of those investments, so they have a lot of other work to do to make, you know, matching funds happen. And from EDA's perspective, they want a direct connection, if we're focusing on infrastructure, to jobs. We're not allowed to just give money directly to private business, but they want to make sure that we're not just, you know, what is the phrase that they use? Um, I can't remember what it is, but they, they want to see a direct connection to jobs is the point. And so that's something where.
Build it and they will come.
Yes, not build it and they will come. They will, they don't want to say, they don't want us to say that if we build it, they will come. They want to see that direct connection. So that's somewhere where these might change in phase two, if we can't make that connection, I think, with Glen Cove. Uh, Commissioner Greg Brotherton from Jefferson County did a great job getting us a lot of letters of support, showing from private business, showing that they really do see this as a worthwhile investment from a job creation perspective. Um, I'm, you know, less, uh, I, I'm a little more skeptical on the Port of Port Townsend Boatyard expansion, but again, these are projects that will probably shift and change as we go into that phase two, as we cast that broader net, um, as far as projects. We have a couple other projects on the next page, I assume. Yes, okay, so these, I think, are some of our, these are, from my perspective at least, these are the projects that I think make our application really unique, that we're taking this really, um, broad approach as far as not just focusing all on that one job creation basket, we're also saying we think that we can do some really good work in connecting people from a social services perspective back into the workforce. And that happens, you know, both in workforce training and in that social services. So we've proposed hiring navigators to help people work their way through that whole process, whether it's helping them work through all the programs that, it's connecting to the DSHS navigators or, or other, you know, child, other navigators that might exist in our system, or it's just holding their hand as they go through workforce training project or, uh, and or, you know, going through an actual hiring and, and being in the workforce, making sure that they have one person that's taking them through that, that's answering their questions, and making sure that they're helping them get to appointments and doing all those things. Because for a lot of our folks, I think it's very intimidating to walk out on that ledge and say, yes, I'm gonna take a chance for my future. They might, we might be able to show them, hey, here's what your future could be, it could be this job that's a floor of twenty-six, twenty-eight, thirty bucks an hour, and it has a room to grow, but it's a scary transition to leave, you know, something that feels more familiar or that feels safer to take that chance. And so if we can hold their hand through that process, I think that's, um, really important. And I see a question about directly funding the development of additional childcare facilities. That is absolutely something we're open to in phase two. Based on the requirements of the grant, I think that that's possible. Um, and I would say that again, from, when we look at that navigator's childcare perspective, a big chunk of that money specifically is going to subsidies to, directly to childcare providers to open up slots, especially for that younger age group of children. Because we recognize that serving that younger age group from zero to six is much more expensive than doing after-school care and summertime camp kind of stuff for older kids. Um, but I do know that there are multiple organizations that have different projects that they're already working on to increase capacity. I don't think we're opposed to that, that those projects didn't necessarily make it into this cut. Um, but we're open to, like I said in that phase two, to say, what, what might the actual investment look like? What we want to focus on, though, is what our data showed us was it's that zero-to-six group that we think needs help. So in that bucket for social service navigator's childcare, we also, we have funding for navigators, we have funding to, um, you know, how, to, to make sure that our childcare providers are collaborating and talking to each other, and I can't remember what we called that. We have funding for direct, um, vouchers to participants, to those people that we're trying to get into the workforce, both for, you know, transportation needs or for childcare needs, and we have subsidies directly to childcare providers.
And, and I think there'll be transportation subsidies as well. So if people don't, can't get to training because of, they don't have, like, their car broke down or that kind of thing. But something that we realized, working with DSHS, and maybe more of you knew about this, but there are so many existing programs that I wasn't familiar with, BFET, ABOT, uh, WorkFirst, I worked, New WorkSource, but, um, that if you are, have certain characteristics, maybe you're of a certain age group, or you've been out of the workforce only X many months, there are programs available to you. So we're not going to reinvent wheels, we are going to pull them all together to working with, um, Employment Security Department and WorkSource and the college and, uh, DSHS with all their myriad of programs. I mean, there's, there's more than a dozen, maybe two dozen programs where people just aren't, aren't aware of what's available to them. So our intention is, yes, we're gonna provide, um, childcare subsidies to the providers that are taking care of infants and toddlers and young children up to age six, because we don't have very many of those slots today available. Um, but then, and also transportation barriers, but then also connecting them with the other state programs that currently exist that aren't being utilized as, in, in the levels that they should be, because people are just unaware of them.
Yes, we had some good questions in the chat to talk about. One, I think, Colleen spoke too fairly directly. Um, the question was, what happens when the subsidy runs out and the childcare providers can no longer subsidize their rates to provide that care to parents? And I think that, again, interfacing with other programs that are, that might, uh, you know, do similar things, I think is a really important part of this, so that we stretch those dollars. We, you know, for the vouchers at least, we, we certainly hope that we're not the only ones that are gonna be providing, you know, vouchers to participants. We're, we're really hoping to make sure that we maximize all the existing programs that exist through DSHS and other places, and, you know, the college has its own programs. And then from the subsidy perspective, that's a really good question. This is a conversation I think we should be continuing to have with our state legislature about how do we really provide that, you know, especially for the younger children, how do you provide that subs, that, that childcare in a way that works for everyone? Because I think the, the really important thing that I think people really understand about childcare is the quality really matters. If you're, if you're driving costs down by lowering quality, that helps no one. That doesn't help the parents, that doesn't help the children. So we want to make sure we're still providing high-quality childcare, and it is gonna be a, a tricky thing to figure out, you know, how does that work when the subsidies run out? The other thing I want to say about that is we're hoping to provide a, um, program that we can then continue on. You know, if, if we see that this navigator system works and that people are getting back into the workforce, and we're seeing continued economic growth because of it. and that people are getting back into the workforce and we're seeing continued economic growth because of it, we can have that conversation with our local communities and say, here's what it costs to run this service. We think it's worth it. Who's going to fund it? And so then we, we look for other sources of funding. We look for local sources of funding. We try to make it continue.
Mike, can I add to your answer? Is that all right? So going back to the beginning of our of our talk today, one of the things that EDA is looking for is innovative solutions. So that's looking for ways of solving problems that are not currently being used. And one way to think about that is to begin thinking about long-term investments that do not come from the traditional uh source, which is, which is government funding. One of the things that's been fascinating about Enric, the Natural Resources Innovation Center, and the coalition that has emerged around that idea is that when you get a lot of employers into the same room, they very quickly identify common concerns. And because they're successful employers, they then find solutions. And one of the solutions that they are discussing is providing childcare to their employees because they recognize that it is a constraint to them both recruiting and retaining employees. So it may well be that private sector employers are going to be willing to fill in that subsidy gap to keep their employees on the job in the future. And those are things that I would encourage the task force to be thinking about in more detail, should we uh or should you be moving on to uh phase two funding?
Another question from the chat that is probably for Dr. Underwood is what did the re- did the research estimate? So how does this work with remote workers? How does the research capture them as far as the PEG demographic?
In uh, in in the literature that's out there, I don't recall seeing uh anything in terms of remote workers being addressed. Um, there's probably some reasons for that. Um, to find remote work for people in our region who are currently in the PEG. It would mean that they can obtain the necessary knowledge, skills, and abilities in a relatively short period of time. The data indicates that because people aren't, you know, folks that are at home right now and they're content at being home right now for whatever reasons, they're not going to be making three, four, five, six-year, you know, training efforts. Um, if they could do that right now, but they're not. So I'm not sure we're going to see a lot of opportunities for this particular group, but they're going to be, you know, locally housed software engineers for a a company somewhere on the East Coast. Um, certainly, we're open to that, but I have a feeling that that may well be an area, the necessary knowledge, skills, and abilities.
All right, well.
Need to follow up.
One last uh point was that we um got forty-nine letters of support. Um, and we had the uh all the tribes of Clallum County, the four tribes write letters of support and the Ho tribe. So um that was a big accomplishment as as all, and we also had DSHS and the Department of Commerce. And regarding the match, our state does a lot of funding for things that other states don't. We have certain programs that are state-funded, not federally funded, um, like the subsidies that exist currently for childcare. That will be also considered a match, not just matched locally, but if we are um leveraging state programs, then that will be considered a match as well. And, you know, we've got Angie on still, I think. She was a one of our grant writers and is a um and is uh the, an analyst at the county and, you know, submitted everything on our behalf. Angie, is there anything you wanted to add? There she is. Hi.
Hi, um. You guys pretty well got it all covered. Um, uh, we're just at this point waiting to see um the next NOFO comes out this winter, or at least that's what they're telling us, but uh no, I think you pretty well got everything covered that we, we, we've done so far.
So they'll pick twenty out of all of, and only certain counties were eligible. Yeah, about twenty, and then they'll cut it down to four. So um, and anyway, we feel pretty good based on um Congressman Kilmer's advocacy. You know, he was able to get over a hundred million dollars for Grays Harbor in already for um through FEMA funds and other funding. And so his intent is to help us get this fifty million. So uh we have more questions. So Jim, Jim Haggood had his hand up. Jim?
Yeah, my, my question was uh for Dan, uh I might have misunderstood my question. In the analysis of the PEG demographic locally, uh, current people within that demographic that are working remotely, obviously in some other area, are not uh designated or tracked as working here, but rather working somewhere else, but they are tracked as living here. You have a sense of how many of that, of that PEG demographic uh fit that bill of of working, working remotely from somewhere else, uh but tracked as living here?
Yeah, so there's, there's two, two elements to answering your question, uh Jim. Uh, one would have, would involve where the consulting team that EDA uh hired, how they went about determining what that PEG was and who was and was not included in that particular region. Uh, that information has not been provided by them. Uh, the second would be that we can use results from the EDC Community Survey, uh, which uh was a representative sample of folks in Clallum County to try to approximate the percent of the labor force that is remotely employed. And I think that number was around seven or eight percent. So that's, tho- those are the, that's the only metric I have to work with.
Okay. Because I think that's, that's a large number based upon the folks that I've run into. Uh, it's, it's a big number out here and it's bigger than it was five years ago.
Well, and I think when we did our surveys, we thought about six percent of the people that were working were remote workers. Initially, uh, years ago, the EDC did a a video basically saying, we're a great place to live if you're a remote worker. And then I cat caught a lot of grief from people across the community saying, hey, you're attracting more people to move here. And all that's doing is putting too much pressure on our housing. So our existing workforce can't afford to live here. And so anyway, we pulled those videos down. Um, but remote work's great if if it's for people that live here today. But, you know, we're not trying to attract remote workers to, you know, that are um that are employed with the business out of Seattle. They currently live in Seattle and they decide to move out to Clallum County. And, you know, that's just not helping out our economy.
And one thing you'll notice is our application really didn't talk about housing at all. And that's because this program specifically told us, we don't want to invest, we don't want to be providing funding for housing. That's, find a different federal program if you want to do that. Um, this was really trying to target people that already live here that are not in the workforce. And so that's where our focus was.
And I want to add, I think there's an intent for, um, well, you know, it's up to the coalition, but I I would hope before we get to phase two, we'll have a really public process involve more cities and, and for me, what is very important is we're supposed to be targeting the most underserved. And so that means forks, that means, you know, communities that um have the highest unemployment, the lowest um median income. And I just, for a DOD grant application, I just went through a process with the Bureau of Economic Analysis and where they, we had to compare the amount of personal income per capita. And in Clallum County, our personal income per capita was forty-six thousand dollars per person, whereas in Jefferson County, it's eight thousand dollars more, fifty-four thousand dollars per person, substantially more. So it doesn't mean that, you know, it means there's a lot more wealth per person in Jefferson County than there is in Clallum. And in Clallum County, uh, I think we got uh like forty-four percent of the job creation funds. And yet we represent sixty-two percent of the population that is not currently employed. So I would like to see that um a bit more normalized in phase two. But I'm not in charge. I'm just one vote of eight currently, and it may very well be that the task force grows or something. I'm not sure.
Yeah. And that, that was a conversation we had. And I think it's, I think Colleen's right. I think that what we kind of decided was we are really one region. We're going to have one regional application. But from my perspective, the data needs to inform our investments. And so if the data is telling us where the investment should go, that's where the investment should go. And so I do think that in phase two, that's one of our target focus areas is how can we find more ways to get investment in creating good jobs in the West End?
Yeah. Well, we're after nine o'clock, so if we don't have any outstanding burning questions that need to be answered, I think we'll go ahead and wrap this up. Um, and happy to share more if anybody has any further questions. And just wanted to say um thanks so much for joining us and we will be notified this winter, they tell us. So um we'll learn more uh when, as it gets colder out. And thank you for the grant from the grant writing team. They just did a fantastic job um and worked really well together. So thanks, everyone, and enjoy your day.
Thank you.
Thank you.